Talent City Council Regular Meeting to Order of October 4th at 6:47 PM. Hold on, please.
Counselor Clark?
Here.
Counselor Penomra?
Here.
Counselor Rider is not present. Counselor Pistisso is not present. Counselor Byers?
Here.
Counselor Perry Miller?
Here.
Mayor Ayers Flot?
Here.
Mayor, you have a point. Thank you, Lucero.
The second item on the agenda is additions or corrections to the agenda. Does anybody have anything? Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I would like to add use of the Town Hall for the Urban Forestry Community Workshop to the agenda.
Okay. Do you want to?
Anywhere is fine.
Anywhere, let's put it under New Business 9.1 or 10.1? Okay. Anybody else? I just want to add one item to the agenda. I'd like to add a commission, a discussion about ethics as item 9.2 and then move 9.2 to 9.3. Okay, anything else? All right, let's go ahead and move on to community announcements. Any community announcements?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, the community announcements for October 4th are advertising October 7th Talent Harvest Festival, citywide night, it'd be 10 AM to 4 PM. So the city staff are gearing up for that activity October 9th. Social media training, part one of three is part of the Talent Business Alliance at the Talent Community Center. On October 10th, we will have a TORA board meeting here in the evening, and I'm working on that agenda tomorrow. October 17th, the Road Reimagine Partner Recognition. This is a visit of the Jackson County, the JCC LTRG Long Term Recovery Group. And from there, seeking more public input. There will be a Talent Urban Forestry Committee Survey. It's being advertised, join the Talent Urban Forestry Committee in shaping our city's future tree. I think Jason will probably talk more about that for a while. And then finally, the conclusion or the period, the comment period for the natural hazard mitigation plan will close on October 16th, and we expect to bring that back to the council on the 18th. For their council, regular council meeting.
Question about that, Tom, is we extended that in hopes of getting some more input. How are we doing on that, Chief? No more additional input? All right, maybe we can have a meeting sometime this week, and if there's anything additional that we can do to help. I wouldn't mind knocking on doors if, you know.
Okay.
Are you gonna do something at Harvest Festival with it? And by you, I don't mean you specifically, but the department, yeah. All right, well, let us know if we can help. I, I thought it was a good idea to extend it. All right, any other community announcement? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to speakers heard on non-agenda items. We have one speaker request form from Leif. Justin? Do I have that right? Johnson, okay, please come forward and state your name and your city for the record.
Flip it on.
And we give you five minutes.
Well, thank you. My name is Leif Josslyn, and I live in Talent. I've had a home here for 20 years, and I was fortunate not to lose it in the firestorm. There's lots of nice things I could say, but as you might imagine, I'm not here for that. I'm kind of, I've been building up some disappointments that I just want to share with you, if I may. But I hope you will take it in the light of being constructive. And by way of example, I'd like to bring up the legendary circle to nowhere and how for many years, people were just wondering what it was all about, and clearly was some kind of blunder. I don't know the full details, but it sort of made us the laughing stock of anybody who would pass through town. Now, it's true that there's a second route that goes to a motorhome park, and I understand that it's important to have housing. There's a critical shortage, shortage of housing and shelter. It's just my concern is that it's right at the intersection of what I think is the gateway to the town. And there's a cyclone fence, the motorhome park, a dirt lot with a taco stand, and then a liquor store. And people might wonder, or maybe that says it all. In defense of the motorhome park, at least it allows space. So some of the, some of the mobile home parks, the motorhome parks that were destroyed in the fire, they had their own personality. And what I'm not really seeing here now with the frenzy of construction is much space. It really broke my heart to see this magic garden over here. That was a meadow, and for years, I just felt like a child wanting to run around and explore. I blink, and now there's what, 96 or more units? And then there's another 99 units. And I've heard it told that there is some guidance or director from the state that the, it's preferable to have more in-building to mitigate climate change. But I don't know if this building frenzy is, is really reasonable or responsible, especially since I've spoken to some neighbors, and they're concerned about the quality of construction and the rate and the long-term character of this town. So it's, it's almost as if, considering the state of Oregon saying, you should pack it in and build like crazy. It's like a, a doctor advising an obese patient, oh, you should triple your food intake. It's not a good doctor and not good advice. So there's just that. The, the fourth thing, in a way of example, is the route to the freeway. And I'm concerned that it's really increased the hazard. And I know there was a lot of planning involved in that, and the intention of a bike path and planters and so forth. I'm supportive, but after the firestorm and the disaster, it just seems like the risk has been increased for catastrophic trouble if there's an evacuation. It's very easy that someone could skip over and drop into that trench or the T-bone into a school bus, and then the whole thing is shut down. And it might have been somebody like Robert McNamara writing the equations on how we're going to defeat the Vietcong. You know, in theory, it might have been a beautiful design, but it makes me nervous. So there was that. Lastly, this is just in the side, but I, it was something I just wondered about. Along 99, there's a fence in, in front of the motorhome park. You may have seen it, and there's a lot of children's art. And I, I haven't studied it. I understand the main message is positive, build back strong, work together, that sort of thing. But there's something I didn't quite understand, and can I pass you a copy of this?
I think we're gonna start with her, but that's fine.
I can go clockwise.
Thank you.
I don't think I have enough, but.
I can share with her.
Okay. So for people who cannot see it, I'll just describe it.
We can share. Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
It's an illustration. It looks innocuous, but kind of concerns me of an American flag of the shape of the contiguous 48 states of America. And there's a, a woman holding it, but the difference is that the bottom half of California, New Mexico, Arizona, and Texas are missing. So this is political art. You may not notice it. People are driving by at 50 miles an hour. But I think it's inappropriate for a public space, and I'm asking that you remove it. Okay, thank you. Is, is there anything else I should do or?
Perfect timing.
Perfect timing.
I didn't even rehearse. Okay.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is department reports. Staff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, we have reports from both the Finance Department, Planning, Community Development, Police Department with photographs, a little explanation as to their pizza and pop with a cop outreach and the excess of that, the success of that. I will defer to each of the directors if they choose to follow up on questions you might have. I know that Community Development Director is listening in and can comment if you have questions relative to community development. The Police Chief and Finance Director are both here as well, so I'm simply going to introduce my competent directors. Should you have any questions or comments on their reports?
Counselor Penomra?
Thanks. I have a question on our lovely Finance Director's report. So it has to do with collection agencies, and it says related council policies, none. I'm remembering a resolution a couple of years back where the City Council voted to not shut off water, to not to send folks to collection agencies, that sort of thing. And I didn't have time to find it. So what I'd, what I'd like, if, if, if the council is agreeable, that this, that this come back to us simply because I do feel that there are policies related. And, and I just want to say that I love the work that you've done about, especially about the tax thing. I'm concerned about collection agencies and our families who can't afford to pay and people getting shut off, that sort of thing. But I do feel there's policies involved, so I, I'd just like to ask staff to hold off on, on making any decisions on this until it comes back before us with, with some policy.
These accounts that we are intending on sending to collections are closed accounts, and they're no longer, how did I say, residents of the city of Talent.
So these are vacant buildings or?
They either, they have received a final bill and possibly chosen not, had not, had chosen not to pay that bill, or bill was lost, or it could be a myriad of things. What we're going to be doing is we're going to be looking at the detail of all of these delinquent accounts and identifying which ones are, have been affected by the Almeida fire, if there are any. What accounts that possibly would have to be, let's say, recontacted? So maybe they have another account open within, within the system. They move from one area to another, and we just need to consolidate the accounts. There's going to be a lot of thoughtfulness involved in dealing with these delinquent accounts. And bear in mind, majority of these accounts are very aged. It's probably been five years since we've sent anybody to collections. And the longer you wait, the, of course, you know, the less likely we would collect on those accounts. And we currently have about $45,000 in accounts that have not been paid.
And I, and I do appreciate the thoughtfulness. And like I say, I think the, looking at the, referring it to the tax folks is, is fine. I'm, I'm not comfortable with the idea, even if folks don't live here anymore, turning them over to a collection agency. I think that, and, and I can't, of course, speak with the council, but I, I would like us to revisit the resolution that we passed sometime, I think it was, I'm gonna guess, mid-2020. And, and just as a council, look at that. And I, and I guess maybe the easiest thing to do would be to provide the specific instructions that, that y'all are given to, giving to the collection.
We are not even close to even getting off the ground with this. There's a lot of pieces and parts that we need to go through, and we really want to be very thoughtful in analyzing these delinquent accounts and not send anybody unnecessarily to, to get their tax returns, even say garnished or whatever you would say.
Yeah.
We want to, we want to be very thoughtful, and that's, that's the whole goal.
And, and I think that has marked your tenure here, Tessa. Everything you brought to us has, has brought a lot of expertise, best practices, and thoughtfulness, and I do appreciate that.
Thank you. And if you can think of the resolution, and I will, I will search for the resolution first thing tomorrow morning. But if you have an idea which one it is or where I should look, you know, please send me an email and I'll.
Yeah, it's gonna be 2020 dash something, and I don't know how many there are. There, there probably aren't that many, but if you were to get a list, and it might say something about COVID on it, but it definitely does talk, if you, if you're able to do a word search, it talks about water utility shut off, words like that.
Yeah, and please remember that these accounts that we're looking at, the, these accounts are closed, there are no.
It's not a question of shut off, I understand. It's really just a question of subjecting people to a collection agency. Thank you. Thank you, Tessa.
So do you want to see the resolution? Do you want the, are you asking for the resolution we presented to the council?
Oh, I think that Tessa was gonna try to find the resolution, but it really is just, I think, a council policy decision about how, what instructions we provide to the collection agency as far as money recovery. There's, I mean, it could be like, hey, do you want to get on a payment plan? Or it could be the tax thing, or like, I think, I think Tessa put a lot of thought into it. I just feel it's a policy thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, I was just, every so often, I remember that Talent was pursuing a grant through FEMA for, you know, like fuels risk reduction on Bear Creek and Wagner Creek. This is something that started when Jamie McLeod Skinner was our interim, and she hired Wilson and Associates from New York. So they started that process. Staff picked up the process and, you know, like last year, revised the application, moved it forward, was my understanding. But I'd like to, an update on where that stands. And I, there's a lot of, I think it was about a million and a half dollars. And, and, you know, Bear Creek and Wagner Creek need our help. And if we've already done a lot of work to get us down that road, it would be really great if we could see that through and put that money to work for our community.
Okay, we'll, we'll work to give you a status report at the next council meeting.
That sounds great.
Provided we can.
Yeah, appreciate that, Tom.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yeah.
Great, okay. Anything else on this department reports? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and move on then to consent calendar. Has everybody had a chance to review the consent calendar? Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion. Counselor Perry Miller?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
You have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Yikes, I didn't provide.
Motion parrot. All right, the next item on the agenda is our executive session. Do I have my script here? Yes, thank you so much. Love it. All right, the Talent City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS 192.6602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. Designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience, including representatives of the media, are directed to exit the room. No decision will be made in this executive session, and the end of the executive session, we will return to an open session.
And how far can you go?
I can go to Panera for you.
I'm on.
I'm on.
I'll be back on the main feed and all that.
Yes.
What time do we get back to second session?
Seven.
Is that right?
We're actually, as we did with the general bargaining agreement, we had the mayor sign that. So I'm sorry we had that language in the committee.
Do you want to add?
I'm on.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2023-083-R. Approval of the collective bargaining agreement for the city's police unit between the city of talent and Teamsters local 223.
Thank you, Tom.
Counselor Anna Byers.
I agree.
Is that right?
We're actually, as we did with the general bargaining agreement, we had the mayor sign that. So I'm sorry we had that language in the committee.
Do you want to add?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution 2023-083-R. Approval of the collective bargaining agreement for the city of, uh, city's police unit between the city of talent and Teamsters local 223. Directing the mayor to sign the agreement. Is there any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Clark.
Yes.
Counselor Byers.
Counselor Perry Miller.
Yes.
Thank you. Sounds like everything went really well. We really appreciate your service and thank you so much for, for making this a really easy to understand process for us. We really appreciated it. Thank you. And Chief, please give our gratitude to your force. We're really grateful to have everybody on board and we hope that this agreement indicates our gratitude. Yeah. Okay, so, um, the next item on the agenda is an ethics item placed on the agenda. So I'll go ahead and get us started. I'll wait for Tom. So we've received a letter earlier today from citizen Derek Manzi stating some concerns about ethics, some ethics concerns. And so in, uh, it came in late. It was asked to be added to the agenda, but it came in late. And was, uh, maybe going to be considered for a later agenda. And I asked for us to go ahead and discuss it tonight. So, um, we'll, uh, I'll be requesting to go ahead and put it on the record of, in tonight's meeting. And then just to mention that, I had, uh, had a conversation with the Ethics Commission concerning some of the concerns that were brought up in the letter. And so I'd also like to submit the response from the Ethics Commission to the record as well.
I, sorry, are you gonna read that into the record? I'd like you to read it into the record because I'm not.
I do want to say that, um, one of the things I, after, um, having a phone call with the Ethics Commission and specifying some of the items, and additional items of concern, I also submitted, or I didn't submit. I, I passed this on to our city attorney for review, just making sure that I had covered all of the, the concerns before bringing it to the council. So, uh, Dave, you had an opportunity to review it and wanted to mention that, um, we had covered all the concerns.
As far as I could tell, uh, all the concerns that were raised in the letter from a constituent were addressed by you in your conversation with, Ethics Commission staff person and then subsequently addressed in her letter back to you.
Okay, so with that, I'll go ahead and read it into the letter upon Counselor Panorma's request. To Mayor Air Flood and Counselor Perry Miller, thank you for your inquiry and the call this morning. The advice and analysis that follows is offered under the authority provided by ORS 244.284 as guidance on how the current provisions of Oregon government ethics law may apply to the circumstances presented. It explained that the city of talent may seek to apply for some wildfire recovery funds. Other, other cities and other nonprofit entities may also apply for those funds, including the Talent Business Alliance and the Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon. The applications will be submitted to and funding determined by a third-party entity, not by the city of talent. In addition to serving as the mayor and counselor for the city of talent, Mayor Air's Flood serves on the board of Talent Business Alliance and is a paid employee of MISO. And Counselor Perry Miller is a paid employee of TBA. You have asked whether, when the city council deliberates and votes on whether the city should submit an application for the wildfire, uh, for the wildfire recovery funds, that either of you would be met with a conflict of interest. A public official is met with a conflict of interest anytime they participate in making a decision or recommendation or taking action that would actual conflict of interest in parentheses, or could potential conflict of interest have a financial impact, positive or negative, on the public official, their relative, or any business with which they are, or their relative is associated. ORS 244.020 (1) and parentheses 13. In order to evaluate whether, or, uh, whether you would be met with a conflict of interest, or we would need to determine whether the action being taken, voting to approve having the city submit an application, would or could result in the financial impact on you, your relatives or business with which you are associated, with which you are associated. To begin with, we look at the definition of business in ORS 244.020 (2). A business is a legal entity operated for economic gain. Definition excludes nonprofits, 501(c)(3), if your association with them is only as a member of the board, or in an unpaid capacity. Government ethics are not legal entities operated for economic gain, or, excuse me. Government entities are not legal entities operated for economic gain, and therefore do not qualify as a business. Thus, they cannot be a business with which you are associated. So when the city council considers and then votes on whether or not the city, uh, whether the city should submit an application for wildfire recovery funds, you would not be met with a conflict of interest because the city is not a business with which you are associated. For each of you, the nonprofit entity, the TBA for Counselor Perry Miller and MISO for Mayor Air's Flood would not qualify as a business because you are paid employees. They would be.
I'm sorry, I'm not wearing my glasses and I'm. Do you want me to take over?
Yeah, yeah.
For each of you, the nonprofit entities, TBA for Counselor Perry Miller and MISO for Mayor Air's Flood would qualify as a business because you were paid employees. They would be businesses under ORS 244.020 (2), and would qualify as businesses with which you were associated. Wait, sorry. Yeah, under ORS 244.020 (3). But it does not appear that the action being taken by the city council would have a financial impact on these businesses with which you are associated. The city council is not voting on awarding recovery funds to these businesses. Rather, it is only voting to have the city submit an application to this third-party entity. Based on the information provided, it does not appear that Mayor Air's Flood or Counselor Perry Miller would be met with a conflict of interest in the circumstances described. Susan Myers.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, just to, a point of clarity, because it wasn't explicitly said in there, that board members of the nonprofit TBA are not paid. It is a volunteer position. And also, I think, uh, it deserves to be said again that we, as council members, um, are, does it count as being paid or not being paid, that we get $125 a month as a stipend? I don't know if that counts as. You only get 102 because I get 125. Oh wait, they're taking out your taxes. Yeah, so, right. So that, I just wanted to clarify that for people who aren't familiar about how nonprofit boards.
I think it's important, though, to add, um, to not, not confuse the situation that even, even us as employees of other organizations that will be applying to the peer funding have nothing to do with what's happening here. Right. That's not a conflict of interest either. And, yeah, so I, um, I want to submit this letter to the record. But really, one of the important things I want to say is that, um, submitting, submitting, uh, council, submitting complaints, ethics complaints to the council is, you know, uh, it, it really has, um, it's, I, I can't choose the right word. What I'm, what I'm trying to say is that it makes more sense to call the Ethics Commission. We are not the Ethics Commission at the city council. We are, we, we manage the business of the city. And while each individual on this board is responsible for, for our own ethics, the council itself is not the Ethics Commission. So I have also included the phone number to the Ethics Commission, so that anybody who has concerns or feels like, um, their questions are not being answered. When I had a conversation with the Ethics Commission today, one of the things I said is, it's, it's typical.
On board and we hope that this agreement indicates our gratitude. Yeah. Um, okay. So, um. The next item on the agenda is an ethics item placed on the agenda. Um, so I'll go ahead and get us started. I'll wait for Tom. So we've received a letter earlier today from citizen Derek Manzi. Um, stating some concerns about ethics. Um, some ethics concerns. And, um, so in, uh, it came in late. It was asked to be added to the agenda, but it came in late. Um, and was, uh. Maybe going to be considered for later agenda and I asked for us to go ahead and and discuss it tonight. So. Will, uh, I'll be requesting to go ahead and and put it on the record. Of, and tonight's meeting and then just to mention that. I had, uh, had a conversation with the Ethics Commission. Um, concerning some of the concerns that were brought up in the letter. And, um, so I'd also like to, um, submit the response from the Ethics Commission to the record as well. I.
Sorry, are you gonna read that into the record? I'd like you to read it into the record because I'm not.
I do want to say that, um, one of the things I after, um. Having a phone call with the Ethics Commission, uh, and and specifying some of the items, um. Uh, and additional items of concern. I also submitted or I didn't submit, I, I, um. Passed this on to our city attorney for review, just making sure that I had covered all of the, the concerns before, uh, bringing it to the council. So, uh, Dave, you had an opportunity to review it and, uh, just wanted to mention that. We had covered all the concerns.
Yeah, as far as I could tell, uh, uh, all the concerns that were raised in the letter from a constituent. Were addressed by you in your conversation with, uh, the Ethics Commission staff person and then. Then subsequently addressed in her letter back to you.
Okay, so with that, I'll go ahead and read it into the letter upon Council Penomarov's request. Um, to Mayor Air Flood and Council Perry Miller. Uh, thank you for your inquiry and the call this morning. The advice and analysis that follows is offered under the authority provided by ORS two four four point two eight four. As guidance on how the current provisions of Oregon government ethics law may apply to the circumstances presented. It explained that the City of Talent may seek to apply for some wildfire recovery funds. Other, other cities and other nonprofit entities may also apply for those funds. Including the Talent Business Alliance and the Micro Enterprise Services of Oregon. The applications will be submitted to and funding determined by a third party entity, not by the City of Talent. In addition to serving as the mayor and counselor for the City of Talent, Mayor Air's Flood serves. On the Board of Talent Business Alliance and is a paid employee of MISO. And Council Perry Miller is a paid employee of TBA. You have asked whether, when the city council deliberates and votes on whether the city should submit an application for the wildfire. Wildfire, uh, for the wildfire recovery funds. That either of you would be met with a conflict of interest. A public official is met with a conflict of interest anytime they participate and make decision or recommendation. Or taking action that would actual conflict of interest in parentheses. Or could potential conflict of interest have a financial impact, positive or negative on the public official. Their relative or any business with which they are or their relative is associated. ORS two four four point zero two zero parentheses one and parentheses thirteen. In order to evaluate whether for, uh, whether you would be met with a conflict of interest. Or we would need to determine whether the action being taken. Voting to approve having the city submit an application would or could result in the financial impact on you. Your relatives or business with which you are associated. With which you are associated, associated. To begin with, we look at the definition of business in ORS two four four point. Two, uh, zero two zero parentheses two. A business is a legal entity operated for economic gain. Definition excludes nonprofits five oh one two three. Your association with them is only as a member on the board. Or in an unpaid capacity. Government ethics are not legal entities operated for economic gain. Excuse me. Government entities are not legal entities operated for economic gain. And therefore do not qualify as a business. Thus, they cannot be a business with which you are associated. So when the city council considers and then votes on whether or not the city. Uh, whether the city should submit an application for wildfire recovery funds. You would not be met with a conflict of interest because the city is not a business with which you are associated. For each of you, the nonprofit entity, the TBA for Counselor Perry Miller. Or Mayor Eric Flood would not qualify as a business because you are paid employees. They would be. Would qualify. I'm sorry, I'm not wearing my glasses and I'm.
Do you want me to take over?
Yeah, yeah.
Hello, I have a last.
Yeah.
For each of you, the nonprofit entities, TBA for Counselor Perry Miller and MISO for Mayor Air's Flood. Would qualify as a business because you were paid employees. They would be businesses under ORS two four four point zero two zero parentheses two. And would qualify as businesses with which you were associated. Wait, sorry. Yeah, under ORS two four four dot zero two zero parentheses three. But it does not appear that the action being taken by the city council would have a financial impact on these businesses with which you are associated. The city council is not voting on awarding recovery funds to these businesses. Rather, it is only voting to have the city submit an application to this third party entity. Based on the information provided, it does not appear that Mayor Air's Flood or Counselor Perry Miller. Would be met with a conflict of interest in the circumstances described. Susan Myers.
Right, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, just to a point of clarity. Because it wasn't explicitly said in there, um, that board members of the nonprofit TBA. Are not paid. It is a volunteer position. And also I think, uh, it deserves to be said again that we as council members, um, are. Does it count as being paid or not being paid that we get a hundred and twenty five dollars a month as a stipend? I don't know if that counts as. A hundred, you only get a hundred and two because I get a hundred and twenty five.
Yeah.
Oh wait, they're taking out your taxes. Yeah, so. Right. So the, I just wanted to clarify that for people who aren't familiar about how nonprofit boards.
I, I think it's important though to add, um, to not, not confuse the situation that even. Even us as employees of other organizations that will be applying to the peer funding has nothing to do with what's happening here.
Right.
Um, that's not a conflict of interest either. And, yeah, so I, um, I want to submit this letter to the record. Um, but really one of the important things I want to say is that. Submitting. Submitting, uh. Council submitting complaints, ethics complaints to the council is. You know. Uh, it, it really has, um, it's. I, I can't choose the right word. What I'm, what I'm trying to say is that it makes more sense to call the Ethics Commission. We are not. The Ethics Commission at the city council. We are, we, we manage the business of the city. And while each individual on this board is responsible for, uh, for our own, um, ethics. The council itself is not the Ethics Commission. So I have, um, also included the phone number to the Ethics Commission. Um, so that anybody who has concerns or feels like, um, their questions are not being answered. When I had a conversation with the Ethics Commission today, one of the things I said is. It's, it's typical for me when these complaints come forward, um, to refer people to the Ethics Commission. Um, to file their concerns with the Ethics Commission and her response was that she thinks I should suggest that they just call the Ethics Commission and start there. Um, so I made sure that the phone number is included in that, um, letter and would encourage anybody that has any concerns about any ethics violations ever. Um, it's your right to due process and we encourage you to, um, this, uh. You know, proceed with your due process, but, um, bringing your, uh, complaints to the council as opposed to the Ethics Commission is a kind of a fruitless effort. Because we are not the Ethics Commission. We do not field ethics complaints. The Ethics Commission though. So my hope is people will take, uh, that good advice, um, that I, uh, had. Even actually improved from the Ethics Commission and that is, go ahead and give them a call. My experience and they've been pretty friendly.
Well, you stole it right where I was going to say I was, the first time I called with a question, they just, uh, an attorney just answered the phone. I'm like, oh wow, you're gonna answer my question right now. So they are very nice and they're very respectful.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so, um. That, uh, those, those two items will be, uh, in the minutes for anybody to review. Thank you so much. Um, so with that item, let's go ahead and move to, uh, nine point three. Which is a discussion on peer projects. Staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. There, uh. There has been some question regarding the process, the peer selection committee process and so after conversations with. A couple of you, I wrote an email to both Alex Campbell and Karen Wheeler Clay. Are part of the committee. Uh, my question was, can either of you explain to me whether the committee. Will entertain a second round of applications and funding as I've been told. Or whether you will have a single extended application process. City of Talent is assembling an application that it would like to have considered. And I need to know what kind of time we have to pull everything together. Please let me know what you can about this process. And Karen did respond before the meetings and said the selection committee. Decided to release the funds in trenches, whatever a trench is. I didn't look that up. Um, while the first deadline, with the first deadline being September one. I expect a robust discussion tomorrow. So the group's meeting tomorrow, uh, we have a representative. We will clarify the next trench release during that meeting. I believe we were aiming for quarterly, which may mean early next year, given the holidays. Please continue to work on the application.
Did they change their, um. So I had heard they were gonna do a. Application by December first date. Has that changed or did they address that? That was, uh, one of the. Well, that was one of the reports that Jordan gave.
Yes, and that's, that's what I was working and it was the understanding that I was working under to try and assemble something representative of. City of Talent. Um, but here she says that will probably be clarified tomorrow as, you know, and she's. Introduced the concept of the holidays and maybe there being a conflict with being able to get. Uh, a complete application. Done by the first of December with Thanksgiving in between. So that's, um, the, the best explanation I've had so far and. And, uh, seems, I, I don't know that. Uh, when Eleanor and I think Counselor Paramell and I were discussing this this afternoon. Um, and because she's now representing the city on the committee and has had conversations with Alex Campbell. It appears that this is a little more fluid. The process is a little more fluid than we originally anticipated. They do have five applications in front of them that they'll be looking at tomorrow. Uh, but now we're being encouraged, uh.
Yay.
To, to proceed and, uh, whether any of those applications might be. Um, bumped out of the process or not, I cannot say. I think they're probably feeling their way along. Uh, the process, uh, as are we. And so, uh, my recommendation to you is to proceed with a conversation about alternative. Application or one that we, I think has, has merit and, and substance and is consistent with. The peer funding guidelines and then I can work on that. Whether that involves collaboration, uh, whether it's independent of, uh, a collaboration or there's a mixture. Think that's what you'd hope to accomplish tonight, at least take a look at. Our fire, fire recovery plan and some of the, the items that were identified in that as maybe a, a way forward.
Right. I'm glad to hear that. I, I just out of curiosity, does the selection committee know that we had directed staff previously to bring application and it just was? Transition that, that. I'm, I'm not exactly sure why those didn't go, but do they know that we were incoming with an application and?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, well, um. So. Has everybody had a chance? I mean, uh, the thing about the fire recovery resiliency plan is that it's adopted. So has everybody had a chance to, to review that as an opportunity or? And I think, uh, if we count. How, I mean, if we look at what our timeline is. Do we have time to like do a study session on this? How would, how would we like to approach this? Does staff have a preference?
Well, if, if you, if you point me in a couple of different directions, I can do some additional. Um, investigating, uh, I can, I can talk with our public works director, Jeff Ballard. Uh, I've been given a tour by the public works crew and I know that there are some. Some, uh, infrastructure needs in the vicinity of Ganges, Gagnis Drive, for instance, uh, which has been. You know, redeveloping and there's some deficiencies and some of our infrastructure there. You know, I've already had conversations with. Uh, both the irrigation district and the fire district, uh, but I can. Proceed with additional conversations with the irrigation district relative to the extension of, um. Uh, Wagner Street and, uh, prospects of coming up with a, a strategy or scenario for, um. Working with them to, in order to get right away and figure out how to. Uh, estimate the costs associated with that, whether there's infrastructure that needs to be part of the, the, uh, the, the street work. And, um, so just need to know, you know, what your preferences are and then I can drill down on it and then we can bring it back to you as. As a couple of more specific options. When you had those three. That I sat through when Jordan was still here, they were, they were. They were directions, but they weren't as definitive probably as they, they could have been and, um, you know, whether we. We, uh, consider streetscape again as, as an option with some, uh, road improvements or road extensions. Uh, really, I, I would prefer to have you. Uh, tell me what. Feel most compelling and I'll, I'll dig down and then we will schedule a study session. We just have to make sure, uh, we have a quorum. We get together and, you know, it doesn't have, it doesn't have to be, uh, you know, a date. Uh, prior to the city council meeting, as I suggested earlier, I mean, we could have an off night. I could bring food so that you'd have something, um, to eat. It wouldn't disrupt your dinner, um. So we can do that if you'd like.
Yeah, I think one of the things we want to talk about when we get to others is just like, what is a good time for a study session for us all? So we can, we can try to nail that down and not waste your time as well, um. But, uh, those are all good suggestions. I think, um, if, if my feedback is that the thing, um, the thing about. Our recovery plan is that it's adopted and, um, so, um. Um. Well, I have some appreciation for some of the suggestions that I've made so far. One thing, I mean, where I would start. Looking for. Plans to, um. To. Connect to this funding would be in the economic revitalization pieces of that plan and in the housing impact pieces. That's really what this HUD funding and this peer funding really is addressing is. Impact to your community as a result of the additional housing money that's coming into the area and how is that impacting your city? I think that's the intention of peer funding and then the other one that I, as I understand it. Is, uh, for economic revitalization. So. It seems like those two areas are already adopted in our, in our plans and might be a good place for us to start with just everything that's. Under economic revitalization and housing impacts.
Okay.
Counselor Clark?
Yeah, um, I think at the last meeting, we, uh, raised the question of whether or not it would be possible to, uh. Apply for, uh, money to build the Wagner Street Extension. Um, do we have any more information or, um. About whether or not that would fall within the. Within the purview of the.
So in addition, um, so the, the Wagner Street Extension is in the adopted plan and I think what I'm hearing, I just want to make sure I understand the question. What you're asking is could we also apply for the monies to buy it and build it?
Yes.
Yeah.
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 Within, within the, from the pure funds or in subsequent funds?
Well, I'm, I was asking about the pure funds.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's a perfectly, I, I think the money can be used.
Okay.
Yeah, Phoenix is applying for a parking lot, um, which, um, on the surface might seem. Seem like an odd project, but my hat's off to Eric. He's listening to his business community and that's what they want and. Um, but they are building, they're asking for money for the full construction of the, of the project, so. Any other possible starting points for y'all? No. Mayor, oh, Counselor Perry Miller?
Um, it's hard to know like what direction to go in because we don't really know where we are with. You know, the conversations that have happened, but I think like. If we, if we're in the plan, section two point four. And then down to C, which is upgrade city infrastructure, you know, that lists. That neighborhood that you were talking about, Tom, it lists, you know, the Gangness neighborhood. Wagner Street Extension, other neighborhood specific improvements that would be like. You know, our storm drains, our sewers, like all of these things that we know are affected already by the increase in the housing development. So. Again, it's hard to know like which direction to go because. Obviously, the Wagner Street Extension would be ideal, I think, but, um, there's a whole list in here that. Is pretty well developed and I think still very needed.
I know we were hearing early on about adverse impacts to our water delivery system. So while we have funding coming in, that's gonna improve our delivery to the city and to Ashland and to Phoenix. Once you get into the city, we have challenges that. The newer type construction is challenging our, uh, our water infrastructure. I had a good conversation with Tessa. About a week ago and she talked about a lot of, um, concerns that are being discussed amongst the staff about. You know, the aging delivery system that we own. And, and how some of this new housing structure, the new, you know, the new type of housing structure is impacting. That, and I think we talked about that in, um, a lot when we were talking about the, uh, recovery and, uh, the recovery plan.
Well, this is a little off, uh, topic, but, uh, geographically. Uh, but if you recall, I think it was, uh, one of our previous meetings, a gentleman came and talked about Foss Road. Robert gave you a great tour of, of, uh, a number of areas of the community and. You've got pipe. I mean, there's one thing to fix the road. There's another thing to replace the pipe that, that dated and, and, uh. Uh, probably borderline, um. Uh, unhealthy, um. That might be another option that we can look at, you know, there's, there's a road improvement and it also involves replacing water lines. That are, um. Putting this, this city residents in a better position. Um, that might be another option, but I, I will. You know, that's enough for me to try and piece together a couple of things that. That I can bring back to you on the form of a study session and, um. I can even begin to, uh, well, I will look at the application so that we know how much content they really need. I, I will have a meeting tomorrow, uh, with Jeff Ballard, who's your engineer. And, uh, between he and Robert and I, we can also kind of reevaluate a couple of areas that, uh. Robert took me through that and suggested that this would be a good place to. Invest some, some money and some improvements while it's still in performative reconstruction stages. To finish it off, um. And that's where some of the density is increasing. So there's a couple of, so and there, and there in the plan, so I'll, I'll, I mean, I can formulate a couple.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I, maybe if we could also mention to, um, Robert, when you're taking that tour that. I mean, I, um, speaking for myself, um, I, um, my understanding about this peer funding is really just. You know, how, how, um. How, how is it going to be used for economic revitalization as a, as a result of the fire and then also as a result of the additional housing money? How is it going to be used to mitigate damage or mitigate challenges to your system?
Yeah.
And so maybe he can show, uh, those areas that are really impacted by. The new builds or the economic revitalization as a result of the fire. And I will say for the record, I, I appreciate you brought up Foss Road because I. I've been, uh, hoping to see Foss Road repaired for a long time and I do think it's in our transportation plan, just FYI. So there's some stuff that's already queued up for funding and.
Yeah, it may not have the criteria that we need, um.
Or be in the, in the same area, but, um, but it would be worth reviewing in contrast, just to make sure that we're not being redundant.
Yeah.
And that if one fund is going to pay for this, then, um, Jordan left us with some pretty good future plans that. That we can segment and make sure that this money is used for its best and highest purpose.
Okay, and, uh, Dave suggested.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I just wanted to add to the Foss Road. Um, when we had safe routes to school down here, there was a suggestion that that would be a really good candidate.
Foss Road?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for Tom to start talking.
Where we end up.
Side conversation.
Yeah, say across the schools, we're probably covering the curb, got our sidewalk, but maybe not the.
The construction, right, yeah, but, um, correct. Uh, the thing is though, one of the things that, um, I think maybe, uh, that was mentioned as far as criteria is ability to leverage. Um, use these dollars, the pure funding dollars to leverage other funds as well. So that might play into it.
Okay.
And Dave, what were you saying?
Who's suggesting that?
Of course, everything depends on, on what the status of the, the peer funding situation is after tomorrow.
Sure.
So, uh, uh, I, I think at the next council meeting. Probably Tom is gonna want to report on what this, what the status is. Is there going to be another round? Is there going to be extension or whatever? Uh, and, and, and then if, if it looks like there is more money going to be available, hopefully there will be. Um, then, uh, then we can begin to talk about these options, you know, for our own application that we put again.
Yeah, I'm just disappointed that. Knowing that we went through a transition and we had an incoming application that they're not. Gonna let the city, you know, get it in, in application. It's a little bit disappointing, but I guess we'll just have to.
Well, she, yeah, and, and as I say, Karen Wheeler Clay said, please continue to work on the application. So they, I just think this is a fluid process. I think they're still trying to figure out. How it. Can best work.
Okay.
And my understanding in conversations with, uh, Counselor Penomaroff and, and, uh, people she's talked to is that. We're kind of ahead of the game in terms of the counties that have been designated for this money. And we're probably, um, in the lead, so they're still, they don't have a basis of comparison with anyone else, so. They're feeling their way, we're feeling our way. I'll give you more, you know. Explicit information when, uh, I get it. And, um, I was even contemplating going to the meeting or dialing in tomorrow, um.
Yeah.
Just to encourage them to wait for us.
I think that'd be great.
Yep, I hope you do. All right, anybody, uh, else? Um, so did we, oh, Counselor Perry Miller?
Just, I think it would be very powerful if you were able to attend, Tom. I know you're a busy guy, but.
Starts at eleven.
It would be great to have you there.
Okay.
Um, so did we decide on whether or not we want to set up a, is it a, a, a study session now or do you want to wait?
Well, that's entirely up to you. I, we will have a tour of board meeting next Tuesday. We will have another council meeting, uh, following week on the eighteenth. Um, but. The week of the sixteenth, the week of the twenty-third.
Bye.
Could be options if you wanted to, you know, and there may be some evenings that are. Could be options if you wanted to, you know, and there may be some evenings that are, or maybe it's a midday meeting if that's. Something that can be worked into a luncheon. You know. But I do, I will need a little time to support together, so I'm I'm thinking next week is probably not a good good option for me and and um.
You mean during the tour meeting, like like not during the tour meeting, but what if we did the tour meeting and then did a study session afterwards?
Yeah.
Because the tour meeting is just going to be an update from access, right? Is there something else?
There you'll you'll get um. We're kind of, I'm going through a folder full of things. I mean, we have new applicants for the grant programs. We have existing applicants that want to be closed out that we need probably to talk about. We've got financials to go through and. If I'm successful getting the. Access people to show up, then you'll get a uh an audible uh reporting of who's in the trailers and when they think that might. Start to uh transition, so.
Yeah.
My, I mean, I wouldn't mind, I mean, I I can do them together, it's just that between now. Like tomorrow and the next day, I'm working just to get the agenda for the Torah pulled together so we can notice it on Friday and have material for you on Tuesday. I'm creative and I'm clever. You know, to dig down a little bit, find out, you know, okay, let you know, put a couple of things together. I don't want to do something half hazard behavior.
Yeah, okay, Council Perry Miller?
Uh what about before our council meeting on the eighteenth? Um Wednesday. I just want to say we have such trouble getting quorum at that time. But I mean, is that a forever problem or is that just? Is that a just right?
I mean, there there are kind of family illnesses involved, which I'm sure will be overcome um in the near future. So I'd be willing to risk it and then um but.
On on my part, I'm looking for a pretty huge deadline for Friday and then my life.
So why don't we shoot for a study session prior to um?
The council meeting?
Yeah.
On the eighteen?
Yeah.
Okay.
And um. So just because of the deadline, Dave, I hate to punt you down a little bit further down the road with your item, but.
I know how popular I am.
I did my homework, yeah, we're ready.
Well, there's no, there's no rush.
Yeah.
On that issue.
Right. All right, it sounds like we have all, Council Perry Miller?
Just five thirty, should we shoot for five thirty on the eighteenth?
Would you like me to have food provided?
I mean, that doesn't hurt. He he walks in with a plate tonight.
You would, you wouldn't resist that?
I'm not resisting.
And discourage that at all.
Okay.
Great. Um okay, uh so um it sounds like we have all of that kind of squared away.
Yes.
For now. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item ten point one, and that was the urban forestry item. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, yeah, we um uh the 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 Urban Forestry Committee um scheduled their community workshop, which is um. Kind of the centerpiece uh or the um of the uh public input part of the uh master plan development process. Uh that is um scheduled for the twenty-first. Um and um they neglected to reserve the uh uh community center um. And uh found out um after we had selected that date that it was already reserved. And um. But if there are no other uh no other planned uses for this room, I would love to see the event happen here and we can. You know, we can block off the dais and just use the center over there. We don't, we don't have to have people up in this area with the technology and whatnot. But um I think it's uh in keeping with the intentions of what this building is for and. I think it would be a great venue for it.
Okay.
Counselor Perry Miller?
How many people do you expect?
I mean, it's hard to say.
Is it just open to the public?
It's open, you know, I mean, if we, you know how these things go, um if we get uh, we get a. A dozen or more people who are actively engaged, that'd be great and maybe it'll be more than that. Um but uh not expecting, you know, wrongs of people. So um but yeah, I mean, I I I would love it if we, you know, would get uh fifteen to thirty, great turnout. So.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's always been.
All right.
Kind of the tradition of using this room for charrettes and town halls and that kind of thing, so great. You know, if there's a process that you'd like to see committees and commissions follow to reserve this room. That we'd like to, that would be great to hear about. Like, I mean, if, yeah, I don't think we know if there's like, do you want us to go? Apply for, um I think the, I I don't, I don't say that sarcastically, the benefit of applying for the room allows. Staff to compare whether or not this room is already being used for something else. So I just don't hesitate to let us know what that looks like to you. Uh to for any of our public official committee and commissions to be able to reserve this room.
Okay.
Okay.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
We have a process for using the. We have, yeah, so we can expand it.
I do have one question on that subject area. It's my understanding um that Adrian is trying to pull together. Three of you for um a meeting next week and is asked for. You know, me to reserve a space for you to do that. And the question came up, is that, will that be considered an executive session or not? If it is, we need to notice it. If it's not, and and merely, you know, a kind of a uh. Uh a meeting scheduled with her and a, you know, coming out of mine, coming together the minds to figure out the next uh. Who the candidates will be or or process will be for city manager.
Yeah, I believe it's an executive session for the um purpose of um preserving. The prospective applicants.
Okay, so I'll let the, I'll let Hector know that so we can properly notice it.
The other thing is that I'm going to be uh remote in, so I'll be coming in remote and 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 I will not be here for the Torah meeting. Um so I'm really hoping that we get a good written report from access because it's really, I was really hoping for that.
Okay.
Sorry, you're not going to be here even remotely for the term?
No, I have a an event that evening that I'm traveling for.
Okay.
Okay, so and you're remote in on the eleventh?
I'll be remoting for the executive session on the eleventh, but not in the evening at for Torah.
Well, the Torah is on on the tenth. Is it not?
Is it?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, um. Let me look at my schedule, yeah.
You'll probably ask me to run it.
Yeah, that's.
So I'm assuming that you know, you wet that to your schedule, but I mean, just keep me posted.
Because I I have the two dates completed, so uh I still might ask you to do that because I'm going to be rolling in kind of late up to Portland, so. Uh but let me, let me check my schedule and then I'll get back to you guys one more together.
Well, I'll make arrangements for the executive session in a room that has the ability for you to. Come into remotely.
Thank you, that's terrific. All right, any other uh? Items? All right, so we'll move on to other business and future agenda items. Does anybody have anything for this? I just have one item for other business. Um I I've sort of made a commitment to to just not let misinformation stand. And we do have a letter um on tonight's agenda from Derek Manthe regarding the discussion about chat and just as a correction. For the record, um and and there's a part in the letter that mentions um that. Counselor Byers had said that the policy would be for the public members only, and in fact, what she said was that it would be for the committee members only. Do I remember that correct? Yeah, um I actually reviewed um the tape after um. Uh after the meeting, subsequent to the meeting uh for another item. And um came across that point four second times, I'm I'm certain. So anyway, it does um it does change the the context of that letter quite a bit. So I just wanted to uh to mention that and make that correction. Um Dave?
Can I just add to that? You had you had asked me at the time um to get back to you on that. The chat feature question.
Yeah.
And uh I I uh I did include that in the uh the proposed council rules. So I'm gonna get a wedge in here. Uh but actually, uh the council back in twenty twenty, I think it was. Uh adopted the rules it was going to use for remote sessions. And I just took that provision and and transferred it over to the proposed council rules. And it basically says um in in uh any remote session. Uh you're gonna turn off, wh- whether it's an executive session or not, you're gonna turn off that chat feature. Because having an exclusive conversation with one or two people either on the council or or in the uh in the audience or in the. The online community uh really is contrary to public meetings law.
Yeah.
So um I think as you all discussed and as Counselor Byers had discussed. And even as the constituent mentioned in his letter, um that's 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 the way. Um the 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 open meetings law uh reads and really says, yeah, we should not be having those extraneous. Conversations.
Yeah, and um I mean, we've talked about it many, many times at the council level. Um I, there have been many times where I've asked um uh any number of people to not use the chat feature and it's well known at the council. By people who frequent council meetings, but but where we, I think, fell short is passing that uh information on to our committees and commissions. And so um I think the most um kind of objective way that we can do that is just kind of create a policy that uh applies to. As you said, all committee and commissions and um and then that way we can just. Um yeah, resolve the issue with respect for everybody, so.
And if I can just sort of insert another little ad for the council rules in the. What I proposed in the council rules and it's something for you all to think about is that the council rules as adopted. Will apply to all your appointee uh committees and commissions unless you specifically exempt them. And uh that's something for us to discuss because you, right, right now, you do have some different rules for some of those different commissions. And you may want to keep those uh that way, so it's something to be thinking about.
Well, um you know, we are at the end of our agenda and it's eight thirty. And if you want to start the conversation, does anybody object to giving Dave a little time on this conversation? You want to just go ahead and start it?
His wife's coming into the airport.
Yeah, I do have an important engagement.
Uh well, I wanted to give you a fair shot at it.
Thank you.
Well, that's great. Okay, is there anybody, uh do we have anything for future agenda? Uh all right, so maybe um I I don't want that point to get lost. Maybe we can get a policy started up at. It's not a code one, um because I think the liaisons will kind of carry that message to the committees and commissions, but at some point in time, if we can get a policy started up about that, that would be good.
You will on, at your next meeting, we will have as an item uh the uh hazard mitigation plan. So as I, as I pointed out and uh, you know, the public input will conclude on the sixteenth and then your meeting's on the eighteenth. So I'll I'll bring that back to you with the expectation that, you know, provide there's any other input has made. Had the adjustments made or the counties made amendments that uh Chief Schnook will incorporate. Then you'll be able to review and adopt it at that meeting.
Great, okay, terrific. Alrighty, uh so there is uh item number twelve, written communications. There is a letter on uh twelve point one. And uh item number thirteen is um adjournment. So we'll adjourn this meeting at eight thirty-two. Well done, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Good meeting.
I liked the individual reports. That was great, that the um department heads did their own reports.
Yeah, I think they should. They, I mean, they.
Well, yeah, I'm glad you're not doing their homework for them.